Alright, you should be good to go.
Okay, thanks Shauna. Alright, I need a motion to accept this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, was that Danny and Jason?
Kathy and Jason.
That was Kathy.
Sorry.
That's alright.
Little hesitation on my side, sorry guys, okay. So we're gonna handle the the hearing of visitors the way we always do, right Cory?
Yeah, so they'll be the same way, they'll be messaging in to Luke McAvoy and he'll share them over to me.
Alright, so. Alright, so moving on to the personnel section of the consent agenda, I need a motion. I'm sorry, let me back up, we didn't do the, I need a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
So moved.
Danny.
Second.
Kathy, any questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's carried, okay. Now moving on to the personnel section of the consent agenda, I need a motion.
So moved.
Jason and Danny, I believe.
Second.
Any questions regarding the personnel section of the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That's carried. The remainder of the consent agenda. I need a motion.
So moved.
Kathy? Do I have a second?
Second.
Jason, any questions regarding the remainder of the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's carried as well. Okay. I do not have a president's report, we've got a lot of things for Cory to present to us tonight, so Cory, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Civic, appreciate the opportunity to share with the board tonight. I'm gonna give you kind of the condensed version of our reopening plans, I know that most of you received the information over the past couple of weeks, the information, as we have a designated page on our website towards reopening. But I'm gonna go ahead and share just a condensed version to kind of walk you through some things tonight. Marcy, can you drop your screen for a second, it says you need to.
I sure can. Did it go away?
I think so, can everybody see my? Is my screen popped up yet for you?
No.
Yeah, it keeps saying that I can't start it while other participant is sharing, so.
Not letting me. Let me see, I can't get it to go away, I can't unshare.
Okay, can I, you know, I'll do, Marcy, I'll just send you this quick and you can pull it up and share it?
Yep.
I think, I think I might be able to do it.
Okay.
Oh wait, here, let me see, no, it's just telling me to share, it's not letting me unshare.
Yep, so now you should be able to do it Cory.
Now I can do it, okay. Uh, let's see, now I gotta find it again, sorry, I was gonna send that to her. This should not be this difficult. Okay. Can everybody see that now?
No.
No.
Okay, here we go.
There we go.
Alright, we finally got here. Thank goodness it didn't take us this long to put this plan together, no, I'm kidding, it actually took several, several days and hours of time, but I just want to talk a little bit about our process and what we've done, I know that you're fairly familiar, but for those of us that are, for those that are joining us tonight, we put two pretty significant size committees together in the district where we were focused on health and safety on one side of the ship and then academics on the other side of the committee, so both of those, those committees have been working diligently and looking at all the guidance from the Department of Health and the State Education Department regarding our opening plans, so I'll touch on all these areas along with including transportation as well, and again, I'll give you the overview, all of the the nuts and bolts and details are online in a more significant, more significant and robust plan on our website. So health and safety goals, obviously, to research, we're charged to work within the CDC guidelines as well as New York State County Health Department regulations. You know, obviously to provide guidance to the district and areas of health, safety, transportation. Sure, the safety and well-being of all faculty, staff and students. So really, all of this information that we're receiving, these guidelines that we're receiving are really focused on, you know, the health and safety of faculty, staff, students, and really our entire community as a whole. Communication and collaboration will be key in all of this that we do in the entire process throughout the district and the school community. We'll have ongoing review of our plans and strategies to ensure that we're effectively implementing our plans and then continue to work on a reopening plan based on local and state guidance. A really important feature will be safe, reliable and efficient transportation for as many students as possible. We've worked through a lot of those details, we had some subcommittees within the Health and Safety Committee with some folks from our Transportation Department and other stakeholders as well, so we were able to get the bus numbers based on social distancing guidelines down into the, into the low twenties, so we feel pretty confident that we can safely transport kids into school. In terms of healthcare, some of the guidance that we've seen has been around student cohort groups and trying to maintain cohorts and not mix cohorts too much. Students and staff that are suspected with COVID-19 symptoms will have a point person in the district that will be communicating with, with them and also directly with the Health Department for confidentiality reasons in that process. So there will, there'll be strict procedures in place for return to school guidance that's given by the Department of Health and the State Education Department. We have ordered and should be receiving shortly signage for social distancing, facial coverings and hand respiratory hygiene, we will focus on on having students wash hands frequently and that to be the primary source of hygiene. We'll also have some stations available and hand sanitizers are available when the normal washing stations might not be available. So we have some extra personal protective equipment that we purchased for our school nurses. And we have an isolation or a triage space for students and adults who may have some symptoms of COVID-19. And then ultimately, we're communicating the message to encourage families, any students or any adults to stay home when they are ill, and this is very similar guidance to what you've seen out there across our entire area, whether it be for business owners or, or large companies, it's a very similar type guidance that's, that's been communicated. So student and staff safety, in order to do the best we can in this entire process to keep everyone safe. There'll be daily health screenings at home or at school. There'll be a set procedures of adults or students who may have symptoms and who test positive for COVID-19, there will be a process that we will go through, we will communicate that step-by-step process as we continue to work with the Health Department. Obviously, the goal is to limit the exposure as much as possible for all students and adults. What we've done in our academic models is we've been able to limit class sizes and reduce rotations of students in hallways in this process, so you'll see in our elementary school, we have several classrooms that we've added, and we've done that by taking some interventionists and, and reading specialists and other staff members and for this year in particular, they would have their own classroom, so we're able to get those numbers down to that manageable number within the social distancing guidelines that we were given from the Department of Health. In the high school, you'll see that we're into a hybrid model and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And the reason for that really comes back to the social distancing guidelines, the numbers of students that we're allowed to have in a classroom at any point in time in the process, and then in a normally in a high school model with the changing of bell schedule and periods, those, those will all things that we'll have to work through in terms of reducing the contact time during those, those events. There's things we were discussing such as One Direction hallways. I know this is a hot topic, but facial coverings will be required at all times. That is not to say that a student might need to pull their mask down to answer a question on occasion, but the majority of the time, the expectation will be that students and staff will wear masks and that is the guidance that we've been given. There will be frequent mask breaks for students and for staff. One of the things we're really gonna try to do and we're hopeful that we have a really nice fall, that we're able to get outside as much as possible and do learning outside. And we're hopeful, so there's some things that we're gonna do at each building, we're looking at purchasing some, some outdoor tent space. We have some pavilions that we can take advantage of as well. We've, we have been working on amping up our wifi outside the buildings, so we're hopeful that we provided barriers for office staff, the nurses, we're spacing desks six feet apart and elements, drivers and aides will be cleaning after each run to fully disinfect at the end of the day. We'll limit students on the bus and keep them socially distanced. Seat belts together when possible, certain buses, alternating window and aisle seats and we're gonna alter routes to ensure social distancing, so based on the number of students that we can have on buses is the reason why you see the difference in the academic times and plans for drop-off for students. At our elementary school, you'll see a 7:30 AM start time for one group of students and then an 8:30 AM start time for the other group of students, so that allows us time to be able to go back out and, and pick students up for school. One will end a little bit earlier, the other will end roughly around 2:30. So we've had to stagger these schedules both in the elementary and the high school in order to meet these social distancing guidelines on the buses and in order to keep everyone safe. As always, just a reminder, there is no midday transportation for half-day UPK, so everyone is aware of that. Certainly, and this is different times than we've normally been, but if we can encourage and, and be hopeful that parents, some can drive their children to school this year more. That would also help us a little bit in terms of some of the issues with the bus, but obviously that's not a, any type of a requirement, just every little bit can help us. So cleaning, disinfecting and maintenance, obviously. Adding hand sanitizer and hand sanitizer stations. We've upgraded and changed all of our air filters throughout the entire district, that is a process of what we normally do, but that has already been done. We will be implementing proper signage so that students and staff will understand the social distancing and, in certain areas. We're actually adding new water filling stations close to the drinking fountains, so we're gonna try to avoid using the drinking fountains, but students will be able to fill their water bottle up with the water filling stations. So those should be installed this summer. Food service, again, breakfast will be grab and go, similar to what it's been. Lunches will be served from the cafeteria and then students will move to a designated socially distant areas. That could be in classrooms, it could be in, in other spaces deemed effective for, for food, you know, we can essentially maybe use some outdoor eating during lunchtime as well with our tents and, and some of our pavilions, so there's some opportunity for that as well. So we have plans developed for students at each of the buildings, whether you're hybrid or virtual, if you're a virtual student and you still want access to food, we certainly will coordinate that as well. These are all things that have gone out in surveys and, and question and answers to families. Again, seats and tables, we've marked to ensure social distancing, parents are encouraged to make accounts for students on their MySchoolBucks. Students will be charged based on their free and reduced full-pay lunch status and you can apply for that on this link so that anyone out there that's willing to communicate that, I know there's been a lot of change in folks for employment and I encourage people to go ahead and apply to see on eligibility for, for that, and that link is right here on, on, on this presentation and also on our reopening webpage. So academically, and again, I'll go through, try to go through quickly here. Our goal really was to develop an enrollment and schedule that could meet social distancing requirements set, set forth by New York State. So when we looked at our student populations, a key, a key thing for us to be able to do was to get the information, enrollment information for our office to discuss enrollment decisions, we've, we've received hundreds and hundreds of phone calls with questions and, you know, we've, we've encouraged people to call the hotline at the district office and then we forwarded questions and responded to questions. And through that process, we've developed the frequently asked questions documents that are on our webpage as well, and we'll continue to expand those as we get more questions in, because many questions can be very similar and sometimes it's easier for, for those to get an answer off our website than have to specifically call and wait for an answer. So we've developed schedules in accordance with transportation in order to meet those social distancing requirements. Again, last spring, we experienced the COVID shutdown very quickly and had to quickly make plans and changes to try to meet students' needs academically. We are much more prepared this time around to offer a more rigorous and viable curriculum through remote learning and through hybrid learning and also for in-person learning through technology. So we believe what we've experienced, we've learned a lot, we've made adjustments to how we plan to do things in terms of instruction and we're still doing continuous work with our staff on what hybrid models look like in the classroom and what's most effective. Ultimately, our goal in all of these options, whether you're an in-person student, you're a hybrid student or you're a completely remote student is to meet the, the learning needs and opportunities for all students. Expectations, what can parents expect? And again, they, they, when they make an enrollment choice, we've asked them to make an enrollment choice for the first 10 weeks, and the reason we've done that is so that we can guarantee the social distancing guidelines are met in the classrooms. So it's important that, that we knew what we were dealing with in terms of enrollment, and right now, as I said before, about 75% in-person and 25% complete remote learning. Again, our, our goal is for our coursework to be rigorous and accountable. We'll be grading on a zero to 100 scale with continuous feedback on all work assigned for secondary levels, seven through 12. Tens will be taken period by period for both in-person and virtual learning. And there'll be live instruction every day, these are all things that we heard from families and from students and from staff through our various surveys and we made sure that we, we tried to address these areas of concern the first time around in order for us to do a better job of delivering this type of instruction, so live instruction was an important component. To wear facial coverings at all times while on buses or in the school building for the school to look, to look and feel different for kids and for families, and I think hopefully we've communicated that well enough at this point for that understanding, we are gonna look at doing some, some videos of of potentially what things may look like in the school for students to, and families to, to help with some of their concern along the way. And lunch in classrooms is, is a probability, we're really in, we're unable to really congregate in large areas. We're really just not allowed to do that based on, on the guidelines. Or we'll work around those guidelines as best we can. So enrollment choices for seventh through 12th grade. Again, these were the two enrollment choices based on the numbers of students we have, the numbers of staff members that we have. The enrollment options were a hybrid, which is an in-person, part in-person and part virtual schedule and then a completely virtual schedule for students and really was based on the comfort level and the choice of, of our students and our, and our families in, in this process, so if you're a hybrid student, you may be in class on a Monday and then Tuesday you may be logging directly into that classroom at that same time that you did when you were in-person the day before, so that we're continuously keeping them up to speed on the instruction that's happening in the classroom. You can see, here's a, here's a sample of what the hybrid model would look like at the secondary level, and those of you that have been on the committees have seen these or with your children, you've seen these come home. Wednesday right now is a complete virtual day, we're looking at a lot of options within, within Wednesdays and trying to get creative with offerings that we may be able to allow on Wednesdays beyond, beyond the normal virtual schedule. And one of the, the pieces in this schedules, we maybe allow students to increase their course offerings or, or opportunities in this type of a model, so we're really gonna try to take advantage of that day and also the rest of the days for those that are really willing to and want to take more and more courses, so we'll allow some flexibility within that. Again, this is just the, this piece was just the virtual, virtual choice and, and again, we're about 25% across the entire district, so here's a sample, this isn't set in stone as far as a high school schedule. But again, due to transportation of when we can bring kids in and when we can drop kids off at home. And typically, elementary students are up early, they're ready to go, they're raring to go. So this, based on the schedules that we're, that we were looking at and the opportunity, we felt that this would be a good time to to go ahead and, and follow a schedule of such, so in the morning, the first few periods, we have two periods here, there's a potential that we may add a third virtual period. And students will travel to school in this general timeframe that probably won't be exact at this point, but pretty close to that timeframe depending on if we make some adjustments to those first few periods. Then during the periods when they are in-person, starting around 11 o'clock, these will be primarily, mostly their core courses. Not all of them, but most of them will be their core courses that they will receive during that scheduled time. And again, as I said before, it's a work in progress, that's a structure or a framework that we're currently following, but there could be some minor adjustments made to that along the way to provide some more flexibility and opportunity for students to take more courses. So enrollment choices at K through six, we, we've been able to, based on again, the number of students who have chosen complete remote learning to reduce our class sizes down far enough that we were able to keep students socially distanced in our classrooms, we're, we're measuring our classrooms and, and know the numbers that we need to get to, which was really important and why we thank our families for for getting back to us so quickly on their choices. And again, so if you're an in-person student and you wanna, you decide that in-person isn't for you for some reason or another, or you've become ill or you're just not comfortable, we are gonna allow kids to, to make the option or families to go before 10 weeks to go to virtual learning if they so choose. The reason we're not doing it the other way is because we have to be able to know and, and understand how we can social distance all these classrooms, so if you're, if you're, if you chose virtual learning you're gonna have to wait for 10 weeks if you want to come in, back into in-person learning. So that's, that's just the process we felt we needed to follow in order to, to be able to get control of those numbers. So here's a sample, again, this is a sample, a framework of, of what a K through six or pre-K through six schedule would look like. You can see here, one group will start at 7:30 and finish at 1:30, so our times are condensed down a little bit this year, in grades two, four and six, you'll see from 8:30 to 2:30. And sixth grade would also be on this, this similar schedule as well, even though they're located in a different building. Universal pre-K will be standard across the board, 8:30 to 1:30. And then you can see the, the UPK AM session and PM session, we, we just have one class that we have, that's an AM and PM session at this point in time. So again, virtual instruction will look somewhat similar in elementary schools, it will with high school, kids will log right into that classroom. We will not have a specific virtual teacher and the reason, reason for that is we will, we will spread the virtual kids out into each classroom. It will be a part of a classroom community every day whether they're in-person or they're virtual, and there will be a significant amount of contact that will happen for the virtual students, and the reason we, we chose to do that, one, we have the technology and capability of doing it. But two, we have a lot of concerns about the requirements from from New York State and, and students having symptoms or being sick or or, or have a stuffy nose or a headache or a sore throat or things that we typically see in an elementary school or in school in general. We don't, we don't want to have kids bouncing back and forth between a virtual teacher and the regular classroom teacher, which is why we want them to all be one classroom community, they stick with that classroom for the year and then there'll be a combination of in-person and virtual instruct. Elementary school would be upwards of seven to eight and consider with significant changes to symptoms of having to send kids home with symptoms. If that number doubles, we're getting close to the chronically absent piece and, and we want to keep consistency by having each teacher have a group of kids. And again, it also fits the model of, we don't know what the future holds in terms of the infection rate in our community or our county in general. If that were to go up and we were to see, to be sent out on remote learning again, this would be the smoothest transition in the process that they would all be together as their classroom community going to remote learning. So that, that's what we've chosen at this point. So apologize, this is a condensed version and it's answering questions that come up from staff. We're actually gonna do what went out today or this evening is another informational piece to bring, bring families up to speed, bring staff up to speed on, on where we're at in the process. We're creating some, some more frequently asked questions documents. So, and I'll talk about, you know, as we move beyond this, some of the changes that the governor's asked for in his most recent announcements, so I'll get to that here shortly, so Marcy, if you want to go ahead and go back to your page, I'll log out of this this presentation and I can just jump to my superintendent's report for the board, but does the board have any questions in general, I know you've seen this, you've seen this.
Do you have my screen back?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Last came on Friday, August seventh. Well, for some reason, I apologize. For some reason, I seem to be having. Difficulty here. Can you hear me okay now?
I can hear you. I don't know if anyone else is having. Occasionally you.
I hear you.
The sound goes out on my end. I don't know if it's because I'm so far away or what.
Yeah, I know. There I know there were some storms in the here tonight, so I'm not sure. That could be some of it. I'll I'll just give you the quick overview of the of of the governor's latest announcement. So the governor came out and said on on August seventh that schools could reopen. For in person instruction. And. One of the things that I think he created some confusion with was around testing and contact tracing. And in the process all along, when we were asked to create these plans. In collaboration with the Department of Health and the State Education Department. The testing and tracing was really just a coordination piece. The districts are going to coordinate and work closely. With the Department of Health. At no point in time will the school district be testing any students or any staff. But we will be providing guidance.
Yeah.
In coordination with. With the Department of Health and we will have a key contact person. We'll have more information to come out. On the step by step process of what that will look like as well. The governor also asked for or required districts to have community based meetings. These are all meetings that we already had planned to do. We've done quite a few question and answer sessions throughout this process and surveys over the last. Four to five months. And we plan to do zoom. Live Zoom question and answer sessions with the community and also with. Our staff as well. So that's something that we had already planned. So it wasn't really anything new in the process. So. August seventeenth. Monday, August seventeenth at ten A M. We will meet with all we go Appalaka and Central School District staff. To do a question and answer session and and give a presentation on reopening. Monday, August seventeenth will be a public meeting at six thirty P M. And Tuesday, August eighteenth will be at ten A M. Public meeting. And on Tuesday, August eighteenth will be a six thirty P M. Public meeting. Where we'll be able to give an updated presentation and answer any questions from staff.
What's the what? What's the arrangement for the public meetings, Cory?
So we'll do it just like this, very similar to this process. Where we'll have a we'll do it live, but we'll have a link to where people can ask questions. And we'll have. We'll have a facilitator of those questions. And then we'll answer those questions back throughout the process. So I'll have the administration. Join join that as well. So we'll give a presentation overview ahead of time. We're also we're also putting out more frequently asked questions. Information to the community to so we can be prepared for some of those questions as well. So we encourage them to go ahead and ask now and we'll we'll get on top of it and then. They certainly can ask more as we as we go on.
Okay.
So I think in terms of where we're at right now with superintendent highlights, that's all I have. I know we have had some more discussion. Around some of the district business that we could go to now.
Okay. All right. So moving on to first. We need a motion on these. Some of these are all of them, right?
Yes.
We have the tax warrant for. The school district and for. The Appalaka and library, correct?
Correct.
Nine point one. So I need a motion to accept the. The tax warrants.
So moved.
Jason, is that Kathy?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions regarding the tax warrants? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? That's carried. Okay. Cory, maybe you can read, you know, some of these. Next, these financing issues. So if you could remind us what they're for.
Screen here. So we have we have three bonds, really, the or bond situations that we're discussing tonight. One is our our bus bonds. Those are for the purchases of our new buses. That's a seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. What you're starting to see or what we're starting to see in general is our rate. The rates are dropping drastically. And for bonds. So they are very, very low at this point. So the bond here that you see that's three point six seven million that's maturing on June fifteenth. We are refunding that bond essentially to a lower rate. In the process. The other piece too that you'll see coming up is really just the authorization for the capital project funding. And the first phase and second phase of funding. Of roughly about eight million dollars. And the reason we decided in in collaboration with our fiscal advisors to go with eight million dollars. We expect to do about four this summer, roughly about four million. Borrow right now. And two, not knowing what we're going to deal with with COVID nineteen situation with potential state aid cuts. We wanted to be awful cautious about strapping ourselves with cash as we move forward. So we felt. In communication with fiscal that it would make more sense. To do that borrowing. It also allows us to keep moving with construction. If for some reason we go out on a. On an extended leave for remote learning. Later on in the fall or this year. We could get back to some more construction or be able to go in and do things. Potentially if our buildings were to be closed to to faculty and students. So those are really.
Go ahead. Sorry.
No, go ahead, Gene. Those are really the three three pieces here.
Right, but they're two two resolution. Nine point two is the buses, correct?
Yes.
And we're actually doing bonds as opposed to bans with because of the rates?
Yes, that's what. Yes.
Normally, we would go out with a ban for buses, right? A five year ban?
Yeah, we have. We have. Yes.
But now we're doing bonds because we got better rates.
Yep, I believe. I believe that is it. Yes.
So I need a motion for nine point two to sell the bonds to pay for the buses that were approved in the May elections.
So moved.
Stacy and Kathy. Okay, any questions regarding that? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. But then the nine point three is is a reissuance, Cory. You said we're gonna refinance the lower rate?
Yes, that's correct.
Already out there, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
So I need a motion on that.
So moved.
Jason. Danny, okay. Any questions regarding that? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's carried. Okay. So those were the that was quite a resolution there, Cory. That one.
Yeah, it was quite a bit there.
That's that's an eye burner.
Sure is.
All right, so. The school calendar, that's. We have to. We have to approve that too, correct?
Yeah, so I wanted to talk a little bit about that. As you can see, we're kind of faced with a daunting task in terms of when staff come back and typically how much time we have to prepare. For the school year start. So what we've done is made some adjustments to our schedule. For training purposes so that we're we're prepared and. Meeting all the guidelines from the Department of Health and the State Education Department. So. I'm requesting this calendar change that we move all our superintendent's conference days. To the first week, which would be the eighth through the eleventh. And then the first the start date for students would be September fourteenth. That'll allow us. Four days to be able to plan and prepare with staff. With with the enormous amounts of of training and information that we need to give to them.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense to me, Cory. Any? Okay, so I need a motion to accept the revised school calendar.
So moved.
Stacy and Jason, any questions regarding that? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So that's carried. And then finally, we have that that final resolution that you talked about, the bond resolution, Cory. This was. The money for the the current project, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's the current project that was approved. Like some time ago.
Right. So I need a motion on this final resolution for bond funding.
So moved. Second.
Kathy and Stacy, any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That's carried. So. That brings us to we don't have any committee reports, right, Cory?
No, we did not have any committee reports.
Did we get any? Did we get any questions? I'm guessing we probably did.
Let me go back and check here quickly. I do not see any questions.
Oh, wow.
That have come up. One of the thing I missed. I just wanted to give you a quick construction data for that, you know, as as. As you knew before, we were kind of a tight time with construction. Nineteen and able to get approved back. Quite a bit. So. We we have started some work in both O F A and at at Appalaka and Elementary School. And I'll just give you a quick overview of what that work is gonna look. There's essentially our steam wing, which is includes our art. Art and science, technology, engineering room. And we're also putting in a new nurses' rooms. We'll have a larger nurses' room as well. So. Working on the secure vestibule area in the we go Free Academy and Appalaka or. We go middle school entrance. So the secure vestibule there is being worked on. We are updating the classrooms that we talked about before. In the wing or the hallways that surround the library. On the first floor and the second floor. So they'll be receiving new flooring, new walls. We will have new terrazzo flooring that will be in the lobby of O F A. So we have some. We have a decent amount of work going to what we thought we could get to and get accomplished for for when we were gonna have to have students back on campus. So we were able to get some things. Going. We're also working on milling and paving around O F A and the middle school. We do know that that's. An issue. We've had some. Some some rough go there for a couple of years with some of the pavement. So. Those are primarily the things. I just wanted to give you a quick update that we're moving right along and, you know, they're at it.
Okay, great, Cory. Thanks. Well, if we don't have any questions, I guess the last thing we have here is a motion to adjourn.
Check one more time. Let's see. Oh, I do have one question says, how will hybrid students in middle or high school be split by name or location? I would say right now that's still being determined. They're still working through. The different groups of how how they plan to to split them up. I do know one of the questions that we received. From from parents and concerns was if I have a student who has a sibling. In the, you know, in the seven through twelve model. Can they be in? Can they be on the same days? And the answer was yes. So we'll work. We'll work with that for sure. To meet those needs. But in terms of how they're gonna split up the the groups, that hasn't been a hundred percent finalized at this point.
Okay, Cory.
And that's all the questions I have for now.
I have one question concerning that.
Sure.
What will we do with? Once practice starts, if they're. Coming to school two days, two days a week, will they be required to come? The other three for their practice?
So they yeah, they would. They would come in for practices if that was if that were to happen. So. Just so everybody's clear, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association put out guidance. Probably a couple of weeks ago, then they put out guidance again today. In order to be a bona fide student, you just have to be enrolled in three classes and physical education. So. You can be a virtual student and still compete in athletics if if there if there happens to be athletics this fall. So that is not an issue. You just have to be a bona fide student. I do have some more questions that just came in. I don't know why these are delayed. But they were coming into a different email apparently for questions. So I'll go through these quickly as well. Okay, well, will there be an orientation for students to meet the teacher and see the classroom prior to the first day? Answer is yes, absolutely. We will. We will definitely do that. We will be having orientations throughout all the buildings. How will pick up and drop off be organized? More kids may be dropped off now. We are working through the pickup and drop off. Piece and how that's gonna work and we'll have detailed information that will will be sent out to families when we get that solved. How often will hands be washed? We don't have a set. Time at at this point in time, we're working on on what a potential schedule could look like and how we can. How how we are able to get all the kids through different staggered times for them to be able to wash their hands. But it will be a high priority to do that. Will the nurse be given more space to quarantine sick kids from injured kids? Yes. We'll have some separate spaces. We have an isolation space that we're required to. Implement in each of the buildings as well. So we'll have our nurse's office and then in isolation space. When will we know the final class sizes? When we get the final numbers and final decisions. From families, we're still we're still about sixty short. We have a decent idea at this point, but. That could change a little bit here over the next week or so. I would imagine within the next few weeks, we should probably start to have that information. There's a question here is I'm wondering if students with an I A P will. Also only follow two days on campus and the rest in person. At this point, yes, but there there are some scenarios where. Certain students based on their I A Ps. Maybe eligible for a longer period of time. Some of our self contained rooms. Classrooms will be five days a week. They will be in person in the entire process. But they are working through. I know the principals are working through on a case by case basis with these situations. And I believe that is all the questions I have at this time.
Okay, well, that's.
Very good questions. These are things we can add to our frequently asked questions list.
Right. Very well thought out questions. Okay. And I'm sure we'll probably get some more Cory and you'll deal with them.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely.
All right, thanks, everyone. I need a motion to adjourn. So moved. Yeah, I think that was.
Everybody.
Okay, everybody. All right. I'll let Marcy figure that one out. All right, all in favor?